Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 1st Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Toriano?
Sure, all selectmen present as well as town council.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Manese? You're muted, bud.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Slavin, announcements?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the Municipal Maintenance Department for the work they did during the storm. It was a very difficult storm because it lasted a long time and at times it really was a whiteout. Especially where they had a severely depleted workforce and also a backup force that we've always usually had. This particular storm severely tested anybody with a pickup truck especially. It just wasn't strong enough to move the snow. A lot of them had to just give up and quit, get towed out, et cetera. And I'd like the people to understand that these type of storms are really difficult. Each one is unique into itself. We got lucky quite a bit because we were supposed to get 50 to 60 mile an hour winds, which would have been a lot of tree damage, a lot of other things, and we did get lucky. The winds were about 30, 35. Most of us lost power for about four hours and went back, which is a very short period of time when you think about it. And it could have been a lot worse than what it was. The warming center which people pressed us on turned out to be not needed. I think we had a few phone calls come in and it was interesting, the phone calls that came and asked, is the warming center open? Do you need it? The answer was no. But especially in our region, all the way around here, warming centers that are open became not needed by anybody at all. Again, because the storm was kind of concentrated the way it did. So again, want to thank everybody at the town administration and all the workers for the hard work they did. And I know today, if you drive around, it's sounding about 11 o'clock in the morning, the roads very quickly get clear right to the ground. And again, the trucks rode again clearing up as much as they could today. And I think that's all I want to express right now.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show that Mr. Sullivan joined at 7:01.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Manese?
Oh, I'd just like to echo Selectmen Slavin's sentiments. Great job by all and I'm glad it was a light snow and not looking forward to a lot more. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Titlebomb? You're muted, sir. You're muted?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, I've seen a lot of people complaining about plowing on Facebook. You know, you get the usual remarks, "All the other towns are better." Well, it's kind of funny because the people who've actually gone to other towns can say, "I went from, you know, place A to place B." Most of them are saying that the side streets, you know, two days ago, a day ago, or whatever, they were all having problems too. Somebody said, you know, "Oh, Stoughton, they're all plowed out, they're all set." And then I see the Stoughton Town Manager on WCVB Channel 5 News last night saying, "Yeah, we're about 75% done." So it's not better in other towns, it's not worse in other towns. Every town pretty much faced the same kind of challenges, which was a lot of snow in a short period of time. You know, you need to realize that when you get a, you know, historic top 10 storm, you're not going to see the roads plowed for a good day afterwards. And, you know, I understand that some of the roads maybe weren't plowed so great the first time around or that, you know, we had to go back today and plow some of them out. But going on Facebook and bitching about it isn't going to get your road fixed. Call the Municipal Maintenance Department. If you've seen other streets plowed and yours was missed, it's quite possible that a new driver or somebody who isn't familiar with the route dismissed you. This happens to me, believe it or not. People go down Oak Street, every time they put a new contract driver on, I have to call the next day and say, "Yeah, could you come by and do Oak Terrace?" And that's a public way. But, you know, there's some unfamiliarity there. You know, I'm sure the town administrator will give us an after-action report. You know, we do learn things from these events, we do figure out how to do it better the next time. But you've got to understand, it's hard to get drivers in an environment when what you get is the one or two big storms over a couple of years. It's hard for the people who plow to make a living depending on just those one or two big storms. I think climate change means we get hit with far fewer storms, but when we do, they're much bigger. And that's a challenge for us. We're going to have to figure out how to get the job done if that's going to be sort of the the weather impacts that affect the business paradigms for people. You know, nobody's going to spend all this money to outfit a truck and get the insurance and do all this, that, and the other thing if they're going to sit home for a year and not benefit from putting all that money into what is basically a business operation for them. So we're going to have to look at this as time goes on. But I do think municipal maintenance, you know, did the best they could under the circumstances. If they've learned some things to do it better the next time, great, but people just have to be patient. You get whacked with 20 inches of snow, don't expect to go anywhere for a day afterwards. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebomb. Mr. Toriano?
Yes, I should jump in on this too. Okay, so I'm probably the only one in this group that plows. And plowing this stuff was very difficult. I have an extremely heavy truck and I can push through it pretty good. But, you know, the average truck out there, pickup style, isn't going to plow this snow. Just wasn't going to happen. They were going to break down, they're going to have all these issues. The other thing is, is nobody wants to plow anymore. The people are all giving up on it, the insurance is too high, the time is, there's not enough time out there. So you go out and you buy an $80,000 pickup truck and a plow and then you pay, you know, $3,000 for insurance and then the next thing you know, you've got to go out there and plow the roads. And they call you maybe once or twice a year. So it just doesn't work, nobody wants to do it. And I know some big contractors, big contractors in this town that have quit plowing. That's it, just not going to do it anymore. It's too much of a waste on their equipment and so on. So the gentleman doesn't have a lot of resources and need to do any of the other towns. Some towns are trying to coax people in with bonuses and $200 an hour and all this baloney to try to get them to come and plow because people don't want to do it anymore. So when you look at the roads and you say, "Well, jeez, they're not that great," I've got news for you. This storm was difficult to move, very difficult. The snow was heavy. You had to push it, it was difficult to push. We probably had a lot of our vehicles that couldn't even push it that were our hired plows. So what they did was a pretty damn good job and I think you can't, you don't want to jump on them. And the other thing too is, I don't know any of the selectmen other than myself who plow. So don't blame the selectmen because the roads didn't get plowed. We don't plow the streets, okay? We just don't, all right? But we do try to do the best we can. And I'm telling you what, all you folks out there that are complaining about municipal maintenance didn't plow your road or whatever, you should be kissing them because there's a lot of towns right now, and I go through them all, that aren't plowed at all to this minute, to this very second. Go to Boston, go down to Boston and have some fun. I went through New Bedford today. Go try to drive down the street in New Bedford. Go ahead, give it a shot. And we have miniscule resources compared to them, miniscule. So let's not complain about the roads and what happened. Roads are pretty good out there, everybody could pass. And I didn't see anybody stuck anywhere, just so you know. So, you know, let's call it like it is, all right? And let's be happy that we were able to pass down the roads that we have here. And also, let's be happy that, I don't know about you, but my power went out for a blink of an eye here and there, all right? And I think we all should be very happy about that, that the electric company had come into town during the summer and cut all those trees. They spent months here cutting trees on the different roads. Thank God, huh? Everybody should be happy about that because our power went back on pretty lickety-split. I was going over the bridge at one point and I saw 30 trucks, 30 trucks, electric trucks headed over the bridge. I counted them, there were 30 of them headed over the bridge because they had a lot of power outages. But we did pretty good and everybody should be very happy about what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to add a slightly different comment to what the gentlemen have said. And that is, I want to thank the first responders of this town who get to work, who are there, who do respond during emergencies. And that's really why the roads need to be plowed, for the first responders to maintain the safety of our residents. And I know that a lot of the gentlemen and women in the two fire districts were helping out and I want to say thank you to them. I also want to say thank you to all of the people who were working really hard to maintain safety for our residents. Town residents' comments. I don't see any hands raised. So I will go on to board's comments, please. Let's see, Mr. Slavin?
No, I've made my comments already.
Okay. Mr. Manese?
I think we're good.
Good, thanks. Mr. Titlebomb?
I said enough already.
Mr. Toriano?
All set.
Okay, me too. How about that? Appointments, reappointments, and interviews, we have none? So we'll move on to town business.
Application from Onset Bay Association to place signs on town property.
Could you let Kat Jones into the meeting, please? It's a slightly different presentation this year in terms of how it's formatted, so it's a little easier to read. Good evening, Kat. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. I'm well. How are you?
Fine, thank you. You like to talk about your application, which is in a slightly different format than you've given it to us before, but...
Yeah, but it got to you. That's good. I figured I'd try, I'd try old-fashioned snail mail this time. So this is, as you know, the beginning of a very long permitting process. And what we hope to present to the community this year is a nice full schedule of events. The powers that be, we have to sit down and talk about our event calendar. And I'll be doing that next week with Wareham Police Department to find out what we can and can't do this year. So to save myself a little bit of time in the permitting process, I figured I'd get this little piece done and then make it official, fill out all the permit applications once I know that we can move forward with some events. I think the community is itching to get back to some semblance of normalcy with events. But again, we'll see what happens. As far as all the town departments decide, public safety is paramount and of course COVID's going to dictate how we move forward. So this permit that I'm asking for this evening is just a small part of the permitting process to to have events and letting people know that they're happening is key. So this is actually a big, a big piece, but I appreciate your time and having me on today.
Thank you. Do any of you gentlemen have a question of the young lady?
I don't have a quest, I don't have a question, but I'd like to read the events off so that people know how hard the Onset Bay Association works and how much they really do to try to, you know, promote cultural, musical, and artistic activities in the town. So I'll just go through them real quick. March 5th, Murder Mystery Night fundraiser at Stone Path. Date to be determined, Easter egg hunt in Prospect Park. Date to be determined, annual kayak poker run at Shell Point Beach. June 29th through August 31st, Onset Summer of Love Contest at Bayview Park. Date to be determined, Sandcastle Day on Onset Beach. Let's see, July 2nd with a rain date of July 9th, Blessing of the Fleet Onset Fireworks. August 6th with a rain date of August 7th, Annual Onset Blues Festival. Date to be determined, Annual Onset Chock Full of Fun Street Painting Festival at the Pier or possibly Merchant's Way. You're expanding your territory, I see, invading the village.
It can hurt. We spread out last year.
Good, good. Date to be determined, Annual Illumination Night on Onset Beach at Dark, 7 to 9:30. Date to be determined, Annual Onset Beach Kite Festival. And date to be determined, Annual Christmas in the Village Throughout the Village. So those are the things that they have planned so far this year that they'd like to do. Of course, you know, as Kat said, it's, you know, permit permitting. But it looks like, you know, it looks like 2019 all over again, and I hope it is.
Right. Minus triple E, minus the triple E. Yeah, of course.
Little did we know, triple E would prove to be a passing minor annoyance compared to this.
That's the least of our worries right now. So, yeah, so fingers crossed we can pull off some events. You know, some other things we are contemplating doing. We plan to be a part of the South Coast Spring Arts Festival, which is May 6th through May 15th. I'll put a call out now for creative types in Wareham. We're looking for artists, artisans, musicians, performers, where we can showcase the artistic talents of the Wareham community. So if people could keep that in mind, May 6th through the 15th, we're going to be part of South Coast Spring Arts, which is kind of a spin-off of Arts Week Boston, which stopped happening a few years ago. Wareham was not on the map for this event last year and I want to make sure that we do get on the map. So if you can think of any events that we can share for the artist community, something free, low cost, doesn't have to necessarily be free, but something that might bring people to Wareham. So that's something to think about as well on top of our regularly scheduled events.
Awesome. At the bottom of the second page of the letter and the application, it tells us that the A-frame signs would be put out several days before an event and removed the morning after the event. And the possible locations you have listed there as well. And so I'm not exactly sure how we would craft this motion.
Move to authorize signs as requested in the presentation from the Onset Bay Association.
Presuming all permits?
Oh, yeah, you know, they're not going to put out signs if there's no event, we know that. So I think that kind of goes without saying.
Okay, right.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Titlebomb, just because I was interrupting you, can you repeat your motion?
Yeah, move to authorize Onset Bay Association to put out signs as presented to us in the list by Ms. Jones.
Thank you. And your second, Mr. Slavin? I see no further discussion. I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
Mr. Toriano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, thank you. Hopefully I'll come back soon with a presentation to you all about our full calendar of events. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ken Buckland, join us now.
Discussion, possible vote to authorize the RFP for the services and leasing of the Tremont Nail property.
Yeah, Mr. Buckland is going to present, I believe.
Yeah, well, we're waiting to get him in. I got this sent out to the board on Thursday. Substantially, it requests the same kind of submittal that was provided to us previously by the Bentley Companies. So it's asking for the same kind of information. The difference here is that where initially the Bentley Companies came back and sought a long-term lease, the original RFP didn't contemplate that. So for procurement purposes, we're going right back to square one so that nobody can say, "Wow, gee, if I'd known you were giving it up for all this time, maybe I would have bid." So this takes care of that problem. But we anticipate that we will see at least one submittal. It would be great if there were competition, but I think there's at least one party that remains interested. So this is just done sort of out of an abundance of caution to avoid any bid challenges and things like that. So that's why we're here. And now I'll ask Director Buckland to speak to it.
Mr. Buckland, is there a way you can straighten out your picture? No? Yep, that's better. Thank you.
I come in at a funny angle, anyway.
Thank you.
The...
And then for the record, so that we don't have a quorum of WRA members, Mr. Sullivan has stepped away from the meeting. Please, the record should show that.
Back in December of 2020, we issued an RFP for a master developer for the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment. And I was asked what a master developer was, and that's one person or one firm who is in charge of all aspects of a mixed-use project.
Can you hang on one second? It occurs to me that I also need to step away from the meeting. Mr. Titlebomb? Mr. Toriano, can you take over running the meeting while I, absent myself?
Well, I mean, I would ask town council if there's really a conflict here. I mean, it was a unanimous vote of the redevelopment authority to bring this forward. So I don't think we're meeting as the redevelopment authority here. We're meeting as the Board of Selectmen on a recommendation from the redevelopment authority that occurred last week. So why don't we, why don't we check with Attorney Bowen and see what he thinks?
Mr. Bowen, do you choose to answer?
Madam Chairman, you're meeting as the Board of Selectmen, not as the redevelopment authority. As long as it's been properly posted as the Board of Selectmen and you're not actually conducting business as the redevelopment authority, it's legitimate.
Okay, thank you.
And the interesting thing here, Judy, is that the redevelopment authority actually is not empowered to make final decisions on Tremont Nail Factory. All that was delegated to the redevelopment authority in this instance was to go out, you know, formulate an RFP, you know, maybe make recommendations to the board if there is a response and that sort of thing. The property itself does come under the direct control of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen is the permitting authority for any work that might occur out there down the road. So it, the, the WRA's role in all this is simply as a facilitator and an adjunct that is not a policy decider.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bowen. I'm remaining with the meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Buckland. I apologize for interrupting you.
That's all right. Back in December of 2020, we started this process and we got one submittal back in January of 2021 from the Bentley Companies. It was a Rhode Island firm. And as you may know, Rhode Island is a state that had a 35% historic tax credit. So they have quite a bit of experience with historic renovations. So this came about as a reasonable developer with a good reference from Rockland Trust Bank as well. So we, in May of 2021, we put in a request to negotiate the land disposition agreement and general lease terms for the project that they had proposed. And if you recall, they had a concept plan that they presented to the Historic Commission, the Historic District Commission, the Sewer Department and the Sewer Commission and the Conservation Commission and in a general public meeting. And it was well received with some suggestions that were taken to heart about the main building and how the development should occur and the concept of development of the site. But one of the things we learned in the process was that for them to make some, make a positive return on this, that they needed a 30-year lease as a minimum with the two 30-year lease options as well for potentially a 90-year lease, but at least a 30-year one anyway, so they would have a return on investment. This was not contemplated in the original RFP. It was issued for a master developer. So we had to go out, back out again with the draft RFP that we have presented to you last, last week. What it does is it includes a 30-year lease option with two 30-year options for renewals for a 90-year total period. Also, this allowed us the ability to identify the risk associated with the dam that was pointed out by a citizen of the town. So we've identified the the Parker Mill Pond Dam, which is the dam, the name of the dam at Tremont Nail Factory, as a, as the liability that it is, as a high-hazard dam. Just to go over again, what a master developer is, it's somebody that's in charge of of all the components of a mixed-use development project. But they may not get their hands dirty building all of the elements. They would turn to other developers to make some, make certain elements of the project in the best fashion possible. So you'd have a residential developer that would be called in to build the units using a market-driven design and finishes, while a commercial developer would probably pop up a cold dark shell for, which is a standard format for commercial retail development. And maybe have a restaurateur prepare her own space so that it meets the unique aspects that, qualities that they're looking for. So a master developer recognizes the qualities that each of these bring to the, to the to project and put the best talent forward. At least that is what we hope for. So what we'd like you tonight is to approve the RFP for issuance to submit to, to public review and, and input. Hopefully we get at least one submission again. It says, it bodes well, I think, that we have the project pretty well nailed down as to what it might be, what it could be. We just have to get somebody in there to make it happen.
All right, so moved.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Is there a second to that? Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Buckland? Mr. Manese? Questions or comments?
I just would like to know through you if our town attorney has reviewed the RFP and what he feels, if we're ready to go with it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowen, do you choose to answer?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've reviewed it as the form and it is ready to go as the form.
Specifically, I did ask Attorney Bowen to review it carefully to make sure that it contained the kind of magic language that would enable us to go to town meeting if we did get a submittal and we did decide to take it to town meeting, you know, for a lengthy disposition of the property. And Attorney Bowen did inform me and Director Buckland that it's sufficient for that purpose.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Slavin, any questions or comments, sir?
I read through the RFP again. I have no issue with any of it. I'm hoping we can finally get this done and off the ground. I think I've been somehow involved with this since 2006 and it's been a long, difficult journey to get this thing done.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebomb?
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, back in 2004, we bought a pig and a poke and it's taken us 18 years to try to turn it into bacon. So let's see what we can do here.
Mr. Toriano?
I'm okay.
Okay, and I have no questions.
No matches, Mr. Toriano?
No, I left it hidden away somewhere. Been a little concerned lately, someone might burn the sucker down.
I have a motion in a second. And I will now go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
Mr. Toriano? Myself, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Buckland.
Thank you all very much as well.
Does this require any signatures other than Derek's?
No, it does not.
Thank you very much.
Next, discussion and vote to declare the intention sold at 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Peter, you want to read this thing into the record?
Yeah, let me pick it up on my, my phone. Yeah, let me pick it up on my uh, my phone here. First, I gotta go through like this 40-page RFP. Let me see.
Did you want to read it again, Mr. Titlebaum?
Hmm, not really. Just so everybody knows, uh, after, after Ken worked on it, we had a meeting and there were a bunch of changes. And then we had sort of an interesting go-around on that as to what version we were working on. So we, Whiteside and I went through it for like two and a half hours. Uh, if anybody can find a comma or out of place on there, it's, they're like a lottery winner once Whiteside looks at something, so. And it's a, it's a good format for anybody to use going forward. Okay, uh, this would be the uh, the notice of the 2022 Annual Spring Town Meeting and Town Election. Uh, Town of Wareham, Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Do you want to do the process first?
Uh, it's up to you. Yeah, I can do that. Uh, Town of Wareham, Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Process for calling a town meeting, April 25th, 2022, general business, May 3rd, 2022, town election. Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, Board of Selectmen establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the Spring Town Meeting. That's what we're doing right now. Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, Board of Selectmen vote to hold the Spring Town Meeting on April 25th, 2022 and to provide notice thereof on February 9th, 2022. Uh, this is under Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4A and C and to open the warrant effective Friday, February 18th, 2022. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, uh, 10 days' notice before the warrant closes. February 9th, 2022, uh, last day to post upon Town's principal bulletin board and the town website. Notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the Spring Town Meeting for April 25th, 2022 and to post the February 18th, 2022 opening and March 1, 2022, closing dates of the warrant. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, 24 hours after voting the date that the warrant opens. Uh, last day for articles to be inserted in the warrant. The last day, uh, which is March 1st, 2022. Uh, the last day for submission of citizen petition articles for insertion in the warrant is 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 1, 2022 at the Office of the Board of Selectmen, Memorial Town Hall, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter Section 2-4C, uh, 10 or more days after the warrant opens. Tuesday, March 1, 2022, Board of Selectmen officially close the warrant. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, 10 days or more after warrant opens. Monday, March 7th, 2022, last day to post upon Town's principal bulletin board and the town website and deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator and to the chairman of the finance committee. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter Section 2-4D, warrant to be delivered no later than the second Monday in March. Monday, April 25th, 2022, commencement of general business portion of Spring Town Meeting. This is under Bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, Spring Town Meeting shall be held on the 4th Monday of April. Uh, Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, Election Day. This is under Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1 also, which is the first Tuesday of May. So that's my motion for the dates.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? I'll go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Okay, now I will move on to the uh legal notice for this. Town of Wareham, Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Notice of 2022 Annual Spring Town Meeting and Town Election, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth Shire Town, to either of the constables of the Town of Wareham. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the Bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham that the general business portion of the 2022 Annual Spring Town Meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 25th, 2022. And the election of officers will be held from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. The last day for submission of citizens petition articles for insertion in the warrant is 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. And you are hereby directed to release this notice upon the Town's principal bulletin board on or before Wednesday, February 8th, 2022. Hereof fail not and make due return of this posting with your doings thereon to the town clerk given under our hands at Wareham this 8th day of February in the year 2022. Uh, true copy attest, Wareham Board of Selectmen, Judith Whiteside, Chair, Patrick Tropiano, Clerk, James M. Manese, Alan Slaven, Peter W. Titlebaum. We can vote this now, uh, and make it effective the 8th, and that will be my motion.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded um with the stipulation that it, that it is effective on the 8th. Any further questions or comments? I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yep. And uh, thanks to uh Cassie. Uh, she did a, she did a pretty darn good job on it this time around. Uh, but wasn't my creation this time.
It's always, the counting is those, is the tough stuff. And you, you're eagle-eyed on that, I gotta say. Anyway, Mr. Title, Mr. Tropiano, oh, Town Administrator's report.
Forty-eight hours.
Oh, wait a minute, we got more on here.
Sorry, do we have any 48 hours?
Yeah, two of the items have been put off for other dates.
Right.
You got your email uh earlier today.
Yep.
The Town Administrator's contract and the uh, the elementary school debt authorization.
Right, the elementary school debt authorization is actually going to be at our meeting before the special town meeting at 6 o'clock, so. Um, and I would ask all of you gentlemen to get to Town Hall and sign the document that we just, okay?
So it'd be 48-hour business is next.
Any 48-hour business?
Nope.
Okay.
No doubt.
Thank you. Thank you all. Um, let's see if I can pull this up real quick. Very good. Just gonna share this real quick. Now, are you seeing it as the PowerPoint presentation or the PowerPoint? Because both of them are on my monitors.
Looks like the presentation.
But we see the slides on the side, too.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, for some reason, hold on. Let's stop, share. Better. All right, we have the, thank you everyone, appreciate your time tonight. We have the FY23 budget presentation. This is the first uh, first bite of the apple, if you will, for us. Uh, we did get the, the governor's aid, which was a uh, which was interesting, say the least. Some increase in the uh, in Chapter 70 beyond the $30 per student. If it was just $30 per student, you would have got about $67,000 or so, given our, our population right now. Uh, and then what the real big increase was, was charter school reimbursement. However, that was obviously offset by the uh, by the charter school assessment. So really big jump in that. We'll, we'll go over that later. It doesn't show as much the impact, um, when you think about it. When we voted the FY22 budget, we didn't have the final cherry sheet numbers. So when that came in, we actually had an increase on the, on the charter sending tuition for 22 as well, beyond what we had budgeted. But because some of the other items, such as new growth, came in a little bit higher, we didn't have to worry about revoting the budget. Plus making sure that you, you know, you have conservative estimates on some of these other items. So that's just starting off with the, the background. And the first item we'll go to is how, how do you get your revenue summary? So you start off with your FY22 levy limit here. This is your two and a half percent increase. So proposition two and a half, this two and a half percent of the levy limit. It's not an individual's tax bill or anything like that. I think sometimes that gets a little confusing for folks. Um, so you're looking at about one, a little over $1.1 million estimated new growth. We don't really have any major projects in the pipeline or really that would start foundations or enough that you could pick it up for new growth. So we're looking at $375,000 for a total of uh just under 47 million. That's really your, your new tax levy. And then you bring in the debt exclusion for the new school. That's the uh excluded, excluded amount, so you wouldn't count in the self-proportion. All right, so then we're moving on to the state aid, Chapter 70. Again, about 13, just under 13.7 million. Big increase on the charter tuition reimbursement. I think we're around, we're in the 300s beforehand. Uh, state aid, just the general government, that's about, that was a 2.7% increase. We had an increase in estimated local receipts, nothing too big. And that we brought in some available funds back in that we'd given a rest, which was the um, such as the wa, the waterways and the wetlands. Uh, enterprise direct fund, direct cost transfer, this is for the benefits, the uh, you know, the, the healthcare, the, what the employees do on behalf of the district and that this portion comes up to over 25 million. So our total estimated new revenues are $73,215,636. So just showing on year-over-year, you're looking at the percentage. Um, you know, levy limit about three, really comes down to 3.58%. The excluded, excluded debt, really not much of a change, $1,200. New growth, what we actually received uh in FY22. So what was put in when we set the tax rate versus what we're looking at is, is a decrease by $94,000. Here's the new aid plus the new growth. We lumped them together. Uh, general government, you see a small, small amount. The estimated local receipts, some of the increase there and then the available funds. So, and then there's a slight reduction in the enterprise fund as overall. Um, there's, there's a couple of things that have reduced, so it's a comfortable reduction there. So all total looks like we have about $2,721,640 available.
Mr. Sullivan, could you speak more clearly, please? Some people are having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
Yeah, I'm on the uh, I'm in the office computer, so I don't know if it'll get any better. Um, so the FY23 revenue source. Was somebody asking something?
No, it's a TV issue, Derek. It's not, uh, if you're on Zoom, it's fine.
Okay. Um, FY23 revenue source, we look at the levy limit, so levy limit and then two and a half percent increase. And then our new growth, so new growth is obviously under a percent, so it's coming in at the 0%. It's about 64% of our revenue comes from taxes. Uh, 20% from the state aid, plus when you get the general government state aid. So almost a quarter of all our revenue is aid from the uh Commonwealth. Local receipts make up 9%. Available funds are a small portion and then the enterprise fund is a small portion. So the bulk is obviously from tax, but we do, we do receive a lot of aid from the Commonwealth when you think about it. 25% of our, of our revenue. So uh, without that, we would, we would definitely be in a tough place. So when going over through the uh FY23 expenses, the tuition assessments are now up to over $4 million. Retired teachers' health insurance, there was a slight reduction, 1.35. And these are the rest of the assess, state assessments, such as the MBTA assessment that we receive, the um uh mosquito control and some of the other ones. Health and dental, we, we're having an increase. Uh, we're act, we're very lucky to be part of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, the steering committee, of which I'm a member, just voted for 3% increases, which is fantastic. Uh, we have an, a large trust fund available. So it's uh, they're able to do some things without putting too much at risk. And that's one of the, the really good aspects. Unfortunately, I have an about 23 new subscribers that uh were unplanned for. Um, so that's where you'll see an increase. And I was looking in the last year going into this one that uh, we, we were going to do really well. I'm concerned about this year with uh, the, those new subscribers on. Uh, when you think about, we have 617 subscribers we, we had planned for, which were a few extra just in case, and going up to 640 is really a big jump. Uh, so that's one of the, one of the big impacts. Uh, Plymouth County Retirement in Launa. Launa is the, is the additional pension plan that the laborers get. So the laborers, water pollution control facility laborers, the four persons in the clerical staff have that additional um pension outside of Plymouth County and that we usually budget about $90,000 for that. Um, general insurance and workers' comp insurance, we're at 1.1 million. Uh, really exciting news, we're getting a reduction of about $150,000 in our premium because of the, the, there's two aspects on workers' comp. There's your uh, your, basically your severity, which is how much you're paying out and the amount of incidents, they have gone down. And I really want to thank Doreen Allen England for that. A lot of her, what she's been doing with the training, getting Maya in here, getting again with the, some of the training and making sure things are being done, changing the reporting, making sure that's all going through properly has helped out. So uh, got, received some kudos from Maya about her and uh, you know, really good result from having good people. So that's exciting. You know, we obviously need every little bit we can get back. Um, this is the Medicare's, the income tax, 1.45%. We pay uh salaries, unemployment. If you remember, we don't pay that out of the budget anymore. We set that aside through free cash and uh, we, I don't think we'll have to appropriate any more money into that right now. Life insurance is a, is a small benefit that uh paid for on behalf of the employees. Veterans benefits, this also, this includes uh the portion that we pay of being part of the, the Cape Cod, the Veterans Association, that gets us the veteran service officer that's over in the multi-service center. And uh, then we pay, we actually pay the, some of the veterans their benefits. So we usually pay about uh, I think it's going about $370,000 to $380,000 to, to veterans and benefits. Then we receive 75% back in uh, of that as a reimbursement through our state aid. The debt exclusion, that's uh, you'll see the principal and interest. So basically that is just a sheer offset of the excluded debt. That principal, we have real, we have very low debt right now. Um, it's, I was on an S and P call earlier with the agency. It was something that, you know, they see favorable, obviously. It's um, I think that's what's left over for a couple of school projects is that debt. So really not much on there and then the interest is shrinking. SERPED, uh, you know, that's the uh, Ellen can tell you about that, but uh, that's a planning agency that we're a part of and for that small amount, we get a lot of hours and a lot of good comes back to the, to the community. Uh, school's operating budget, you know, Alaska, Dr. Shaverhood and I will get together, try and see how to spread this out. It's obviously not the amount that they have voted or requested. Uh, it's about $863,000 increase or 862. Uh, and then Upper Cape Cod Tech, there's approximately 11 students, less going. And then Upper Cape Cod Tech, there's approximately 11 students less going this year, so you'll see a small decline. And then the general government budget in there. So the estimated of the expenses, I said 73,215,636. So just showing something from change of year over year. The school employee benefits, you'll see that's a 4.92% increase. That would obviously be higher if we didn't have the $150,000 reduction from workers' comp. General government in there, the major, the major things that we are going to see differences. This budget has, is plans for a full-time COA director. These again, has, has talked to us about maybe it's time to get a full-timer in there and she would like to see, I think she's telling us, that's not her, she wants to travel. I'm looking, so that's, we budgeted 40,000 before. So that would increase our budget to about 90,000 to have a full-time director. It's, there's 19, this goes for an, also a 19-hour week employee, a library assistant to, to help them. They'd requested three assistants in the budget. I'm going to fund the, the 19-hour week and request that they use the library aid to, to fund the rest of those. And then there's a couple other little changes, but not really additional staffing. Very seek to have a, a minute taker and put some money aside for that to try and help the Conservation Commission. But that's about, I think about 4,000 for that. But usually I think I've been look, looking through some of the pages, it's about $25 an hour for a minute taker. And if you figure 26 meetings a year for them with six hours and you know, per, per meeting plus transcribing the minutes, I think that should take care of them well, rather than us hiring a new employee to do that. You see some change, so that's why you'd see some change in the, the cultural and some of the other big ones. So really state and county assessments, as I talked before, that was really a large increase with the, with the charter school. And the FY22 column again is not really telling because this is updated with the final cherry sheet now, oh, we actually budgeted. So you'd see this state, state and county assessments would actually be about, truly about 150,000 more than what we budgeted last time. So we're looking overall, about a, a 3.98% increase. So this was what we, we go through, this is just more of a interesting thing, a visual thing for folks on where does your money go? If you put the dollar bill there, it kind of gives you a portion. Now just reminded, this is the school, this is the department directly. And then you've got the, the shared benefits, public safety, the assessments, which, you know, school, the majority of that's school choice, sending charter school. And then the retired teachers, Upper Cape Cod Tech. Then you, you've got the, that's the excluded debt. Then you've got your general government, Public Works, Cultural and sort of debt right there. So gives you an idea of, just as a, just an interesting visual, I think. Expenses by category, again, you know, the biggest one is obviously the, the school employee benefits, that's shared benefits between the school and town. Then the public safety, state and county assessments, general government, Public Works, which that's municipal maintenance plus streetlights plus snow removal, Health and Human Services and Cultural Recreation. So another good, good visual of how our money is spent. So one of the big things is, over the last 10 years, we've seen where our state aid has been shrinking because it's the net state aid, right? As the state aid increases and the assessments go, we've been, we've been trending downwards. Over the last few years, we've had sort of this, you know, the FY21 spike, then big reduction. And then this year, a slight increase overall in the net of about a, about 100, 140K or so. So nothing, nothing to, one that, but nothing too impressive, but we're still obviously for about 1.2 million less than where we were 10 years ago and now, that's a, that's a big reduction. It would help drastically have the same as we had 10 years ago, let alone higher. These are the, these are the charges, so the assessments we get. Back in 2013, it was 2,004, 2,430,000. We're now up to 5,869,000 and some change. So yeah, that's a, it's a massive increase. So that's one of the big hits that, that keeps on hurting us. So the majority is, you can see the school choice and charter school sending. Interesting thing over the, right around the game of COVID is some school choice dropped off in the charter school and then leveled down. Charter school really pushed up, so interesting phenomenon with that. And, you know, be interested to see what some folks' thoughts are. So when you look at that, we're over, we're over $4 million now on what we're doing, sending to other schools and to charter schools on top of the regular school budget. So I really thought right around here, this is, you're reaching your saturation point, but, you know, here, here you go and I you know, the, the governor is, is Selectman Slavin, I've spoken about the governor is very fav, has been very favorable on the charter schools. And this last increase of the, of the reimbursement has been, you know, certainly been interesting, but I, I, I'm a little worried that's not, not going to come to fruition and that this would be a one-year flip. That'd be a massive impact to us if we didn't get as much as this, this increase was on the revenue side for it. So Upper Cape Cod Tech, just over the years, you can see we've been trending down. We've, we, we had that spike over a few years when our student population was really jumping into Upper Cape Cod Tech. That leveled out right around the COVID and we've seen a small decline, but you know, it's, it's really, it's luck of the draw. So you could see a good, big spike at any given time, but yeah, I just thought this should be a good visual to see what's going on. This is the one that we talk about every year. You've got, so if you could read from left to right, this is the average single-family tax bill for Wareham, 3,513. Then you take that and you add the Wareham Fire District Tax to the average single-family tax bill, which brings up to $4,259. And then onset's a little higher, so that brings them up to 4,402. Then you look at the, our surrounding communities. You've got Born, excuse me, Falmouth at 5,080, Born at 5,295. And I don't think I need to read them off for you going through, but you get into Plymouth at over 6,400, Metta Voice at 66. And, you know, it's, people say, well, you know, like, like Falmouth, for instance, what's, what's 6, 700 bucks? What, what does that really matter? But when you look at it, that's with this chart, you take the Born, let's go Falmouth over here, as we were just talking, the Falmouth, average single-family tax bill. You take the, the Wareham single-family, average single-family tax bill with the onset fire district tax. You subtract them from one another, which would give you 678. Six, and this is how many single-family parcels we have in the town of Wareham. So 678 times 9,475 gets you about 16, 6.4 million dollars extra in revenue. Born, it's about 8.4, Carver 16. So it's, it's just an example. Some people look at the tax rate. You really need to look at the, the average single-family tax bill because that's really in your, in your wheelhouse there. What, that, that talks to, to what your folks are, are doing in town. So that should be the end right there. It was the, so this is obviously the preliminary one. We're going to have the All-Day Finance Committee Hearing, I believe we're, we're scheduling it for the end of this month. Bernie and I are going, Mr. Pigeon and myself are going to confirm that and go, go over that. You know, is there, is there really any, any questions at this time? Again, this is sort of the, the big first bite of the apple.
Mr. Slavin?
Uh, no, it's pretty much in line with what we, I expected from going back as much as two years ago. My real concern as hysterics is what happens in 2024 and 2025. With the federal government probably having to cut back after all this ridiculous amount of printed money and spending with no backing. We're at the state level and at obviously at the local level, we're very concerned about what's going to happen with all the federal grant programs, et cetera, that feed the state their money, which then comes down to us. So although this is not a bad year overall, the schools did very well compared to the towns on the, so far on the, on the budget. I think if I remember right, Derek, it was only $43,000 increase on the town side on this proposed budget that we received a few days ago and $43,000 doesn't cover even, even the, even cover the inflation effect that we're dealing with. But the bottom line is that what happens in the next year, but really the year after that. So we have to be extremely diligent in what we do and how we plan the stabilization fund, et cetera. Needs to be in place and solid. We really can't afford to take any money out of there and try and do things that'll be nice to do because we may end up two years from now having to know the difference to the stabilization fund, but also to cut services. So I'm putting that out. Unfortunately, it's a negative output, but I want people to understand that we're seriously looking at fiscal responsibilities. We may have some serious issues in the year to two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manes?
Um, this is my first look at it, this PowerPoint. So it was kind of tough to ask questions. What's cultural and recreation? What falls under that? In general, just in general, what, what, what's
So it's the libraries, historical commissions, things like that. That's your, your cultural and recreation. So if you had a recreation, it's just, that's, that's what you use for the uniform, Massachusetts Accounting System. So you call it culture and recreation, that's the segments.
Okay.
And, you know, with your library, we have historical commission. If you had a recreation department, if you had a parks department, if you have museums, you could even do celebrations such as Memorial Day and that.
Yeah. Now you, you also said oh, good, alright, I, I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine.
Um, had an increase in members to the Health and Dental, 617 up to 640. Was that
Yes.
Just people picking it up who already worked for us? New hires within the school and or town or a combination of the two?
Yeah, it looks to be new hires, not from, from the town. There's that's the only ones that we had that changed off that when we tracked people coming on, you know, we anticipate every year to have. You know, you might have somebody get married that moves on to a family plan. You might have hired somebody that was in their early twenties and now they're hitting that magic number of 27 and getting off of mom and dad's plan. You know, so we anticipate changes, but that, that, that was a huge jump. That's not something that I certainly anticipated.
Alright, I, I guess that's about it. You'll be forwarding us this PowerPoint, right?
You mean you want more time than this to look over it?
Well, it would have been nice to have it, actually. I think there's a method to your madness, my young friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Title One?
No, I mean, you know, the most important slide in there, I, I don't think is the, is really the budget and where the money goes. It's the comparables to the, to the towns around us. You know, people, people want services and, and people want this and, you know, they want a community center and they want these things. Here's an example for you. If you take away the sewer berm that I gotta pay, between the town taxes and the fire district assessment, Wareham Fire District, it's around 5,900 bucks for where I am. For my girlfriend who's up in Quincy, comparable house, 60 square feet more than I am. She's got a postage stamp sized lot, but she's in a nice upper middle-class neighborhood. Okay, I got a water view, she doesn't, whatever, just call them comps. Her tax bill is $8,200. So that means the city of Quincy gets 2,300 bucks more to, to, to make her happy and provide services. And so when you go to a place like Quincy, you'll see three different community centers in the neighborhoods. You'll see this, you'll see that. You'll see a municipal trash collection that comes with the taxes. And, and that's a consequence of her paying, you know, 30% or whatever it is, he could probably do the math faster than me. But, you know, when you pay more, you get more and it's really that simple. Where the, one of the things that my, my late mother used to talk about Wareham was, she said it's the only place in Massachusetts where the average person could settle down, raise a family, you know, take a boat, launch it, have great beaches and everything else. There was no place else in the state that compared to us for the natural beauty combined with the cheap real estate and low taxes. So there's, there's, you know, that's the good thing. We're affordable. The bad thing is, we can't provide as much services as the bigger places can, that have higher tax takes, if you will, from the citizens. So that's, that's the reality of it, folks. You, you can't get city-level services on, on this town's budget. So that's just the way it is.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
I really don't have much to say because, you know, this is sort of the first where we start from and going forward and we'll see how it works out. It's nice that we're at least in a decent spot to start with and we'll see where it ends up.
Thank you. My only comment, I'd like to echo what Mr. Slavin has said. Today, the announcement came that the national debt is $30 trillion. And that is several years ahead of what was being forecast by the federal government in terms of government borrowing. Where is that money going to come from to be repaid? Because you can't just keep printing money without having something backing it up. So I'm very worried about the national economy, which will trickle down to the state economies as well as to the town economies. I'm just gonna leave it at that. Mr. Sullivan, do you have anything, anything else under your report, sir?
I think, did you get the, I believe Missal and England sent you the updated COVID numbers. We're, we're trending in a much better direction. Obviously, we're down to 172 new confirmed cases. Would love to be lower, obviously, but we're obviously not. Unfortunately, there were four deaths reported in the, in the system for last week. So just, just something to keep under wraps. But we are, from our, from our major spike, we continue shooting, shooting down. So that's, that's very positive.
Good, thank you. Mr. Title One, did you have a question?
Yeah, to, to the COVID point, it's kind of funny, you know, we keep here about, we, we keep hearing about the numbers are coming down and it's getting better and there's less, you know, a slowing rate of infection and so on and so forth. But then I turned on the news last night and there's 83 deaths in the Commonwealth. And, you know, I don't know if we've just become so, you know, numb to all this going on. But I mean, 83 people died, you know, in one day in the state from this virus. It's still out there. I see people all the time in the stores, you know, we're all fed up with it. I hate the mask, you hate the mask. But, you know, do you want to be one of the 83? That's what it comes down to. If, you know, and especially if you haven't taken the, the steps to protect yourself through other means. You know, so please be careful out there. We don't want to see any deaths being reported by the town administrator at our meetings. It's, it's a horrible thing. So, you know, please pay attention. It's still around and, and, and be careful. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Sullivan, you're all set, or are you?
Yes, Wes.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go on to liaison initiative reports. Mr. Manes?
I have a Carver Wareham Regional District, Refuge District meeting tomorrow. I have a Carver Wareham, uh, regional district, uh, refuse district meeting tomorrow. Um, our longtime council is retiring, so, um, we put a, an Adna, um, uh, yeah, an attorney, um, paper that they, they utilize in southeastern Mass. It's a notice, uh, you know, of openings and, uh, we received four, uh, letters of interest and inquiries. So we will be discussing that at tomorrow night's meeting. Just the process we want to do and then, um, we will be interviewing and, and hiring, um, new counsel for the district. So that's tomorrow night. We're going to have just our meeting and then it'll just be very introductory, but pretty much setting up our process. Um, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Uh, to start off with, uh, the Mass Municipal Association, we're now doing our seminars, which normally will be done at the annual meeting. We've had two the last couple of days. Uh, I think I've got eight more to go. Uh, thankfully they're only one hour, but either at night, during the morning or twelve o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, one pretty important point that came out, uh, on, on the municipal law piece was on the open meeting law. Uh, we've kicked back and forth on our citizens' participation, uh, responding and not responding. Sometimes it gets the better of us and we emotionally respond, whatever. Uh, what came out of the lawyers was a definite statement that, uh, if you have something like citizens' participation and something is done, uh, the board of selectmen really cannot sit and discuss that at that point. They can bring it back at a later date and put it on the agenda, but if they sit there and discuss it where it's not an agenda item, it's just citizen participation, you're making responses to it, you're actually violating the open meeting law. I was kind of surprised to see it that much. I thought it was just kind of something that we just put together because we don't want to respond until we know what we're talking about. You know, all sides of the issue. So we actually cannot do that. So I just want to give everybody a heads up on that. Uh, what also came out, it's going to be discussed, I think, again on, uh, I think it's maybe tomorrow. Uh, the MBTA, in their infinite wisdom, came out with a new program about housing, uh, and depending what type of community you are for MBTA, whether you're participating, whether you're in the main area, whether you're adjoining, et cetera. I sent all the selectmen a copy, uh, from the MMA about this particular, uh, issue that's, that's sitting there, you know, and this particular piece here is kind of a problem because, you know, we're an adjoining technically community. So the impact of having affordable housing within a half a mile is a requirement for a certain amount is not so much a real problem, but if we are fortunate enough to get commuter rail, it changes from a, a joining to a what they call immediate participatory community. And that particular requirement is gonna, gonna be there. And I don't know how we go ahead and provide for affordable housing, say within a half a mile of the Cape Flyer. It's going to be interesting how it works and how it ends up. The other piece is, which I think is important, is the solar issue came up. I sent a, a copy of the proposed solar bylaw that's sitting up at the House and Senate and it's being seriously discussed. As you know, the governor uh, has put solar alternative energy as one of his priorities besides out of schools, et cetera. And the solar, there's a bylaw piece to this particular solar that's percolating down the line, which takes away from the local cities and towns, uh, their abilities. It changes the zoning and, uh, it makes it much easier for solar to be installed, uh, regardless of whether it's a clear or a non-clear area, et cetera. And I think it's something that we have to watch closely because we have a solar bylaw committee working, uh, as do a lot of towns trying to figure this out. And we may end up losing our control completely of that, the way it's working. And I'm sure this is heavily backed by the solar industry as well. So that's another piece we gonna have to watch closely because every once in a while we get these unfunded mandates. On top of that, we get these mandates that take away our controls. So just wanted to bring that up. I have, um, everything else as far as the road projects that are, uh, set up for Wareham after the serpent monthly meeting and the MPO meeting, uh, basically is still in line. We still have the traffic light in that Swiss Beach is still planned to be done. Uh, and they've actually expanded the road project from Swiss Beach Road over to, uh, the bridge, et cetera. Uh, so they're going to be doing work on that road as well. And that's part of the proposed, uh, four-lane to three-lane, uh, Route Six change from all the way from the beginning of Fairhaven on the Bedford side all the way right to here. Uh, so those things are coming down the line. Uh, I have my MMA regular meeting that used to have to go to Boston all day. Now thankfully it's Zoom, so I have to travel starting next week on Tuesday. And we'll see what the new news for everything is at that point there. And I think that's about enough, enough for today.
That's why you called our foreign representative.
I wish I had better news most of the time. It's getting very difficult. I hope everybody understands that. This is a tough fight.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Titlebon? You're muted, sir.
Yeah, uh, nothing this week. Uh, next week, uh, Tricia Wertz, who was, uh, volunteered to do outreach uh, for the redevelopment authority, uh, is going to be giving a report to the authority. So that'll be next Thursday. Uh, I'm going to try to see what I can do to get that recorded so that people can see it. Uh, cause I think it's, you know, it's important to, uh, get that kind of feedback, especially, uh, you know, in terms of looking for rezoning Wareham Village. And also, uh, she, she's kind of, just so people understand, she's kind of setting this up as a pathway for communication, uh, from boards like the redevelopment authority or the board of selectmen or whatever, you know, to the citizens to try to, uh, increase citizen engagement and try to do it in a pos-, you know, positive light and so on and so forth. Uh, so we're really looking forward to seeing what she has to present to us next week. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Tropiano?
All set.
Okay. I have a couple of things to report on. Um, the Deacon's Group Steering Committee Group met last night at six o'clock. Uh, they elected a chairman and a, and a clerk and they conducted business and they, I can tell you, they hit the ground running. Um, so they are going to be meeting every Wednesday, I believe, at seven PM on Zoom. It is a public meeting. Their agendas will be posted on the town website. Uh, we know that there are three library trustee vacancies and those have been posted on the town website as, as well as in the paper. And, um, I want to talk a little bit about something that we've, we, the board of selectmen and the, and town administrator have been working on for several months. When the, um, Massachusetts Audubon Society walked away from the purchase of Little Harbor Country Club, the town spent months, as you gentlemen know, talking in executive session about what we would like to do about that situation. And ultimately we came to the solution or to the conclusion that we would like to offer to purchase the property. The property was for sale for two million, three hundred thousand dollars and Mr. Sullivan went last week to the community preservation, um, meeting and was able to obtain two million dollars of that funding from the community preservation fund, one million in cash and one million in basically bond repayment, which is a very generous offer from community preservation. There are a couple of things that need to be done before they, you know, agree to free the money up and those things will be, in fact, accomplished before the town meeting, the special town meeting. But I want to talk about, um, uh, one of our partners. In October, Wareham Land Trust stepped forward and offered to help in any way that they could in terms of making sure that the property known as Little Harbor, which is fifty-four plus or minus acres, um, stayed open space and or recreation space. And that's why the community preservation group actually, uh, provided or agreed to provide the funding. Funding is, um, basically the community preservation funds are monies that have already been collected. You can call it a savings account, if you will. Um, and they have, although they have different pockets in, in their savings accounts, they have over six million dollars that they can, in fact, spend on one of four categories, two of the categories being open space and recreation. So this was a very generous give from that community for the town to enable it to purchase the golf course without any impact on the town's tax rate at all. There are questions about, um, well, you know, what does the town know about running a golf course? Not much, but we know enough that we should be looking for a professional golf management company. And that has been researched in depth. The purchase of the property envisions that the course will remain a golf course for several years. Hopefully as a community golf course, it is a par fifty-six. It's a far different golf course kind than Bay Point. Um, it is surrounded by woods and, uh, water. Bay Point, unfortunately, at least in my opinion, um, has now, it, it does not have the open space that it did when it was originally designed. Um, and it's a far larger, uh, course. It's about twice the length in terms of yardage for the course. So the community preservation money comes with strings attached and it, as it well should, because it is for preservation or recreation. There will in fact be a conservation restriction on the land, presuming that the town meeting votes to authorize the town to purchase it. And that commit, that conservation restriction needs a holder of it. And that's where Wareham Land Trust has been engaging in conversations with the town about how they might help, um, meet that requirement of getting a conservation restriction and holding it in perpetuity. Despite its name as being a country club, Little Harbor has always been a public golf course and will remain a public golf, golf course. It is in fact, purchased by the town of Wareham, will be run by a professional management company. There will be a contract for the management. There will be no town employees. Management company will be responsible for everything with the exception of capital expenditures over a period of time. So, Community Preservation Act money cannot be used to plow roads, cannot be used to create a warming center. A lot of things that it cannot be used for, but there are things that it can be used for. And there really are many, many people who are excited about the possibility of the town acquiring with our savings bank money, this beautiful fifty-four acre parcel of land, which is adjacent to the only resident-only town beach. And I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Todd, Mr. Tropiano?
Okay, next up is, um, uh, authorization to pay the law office of Richard Bowen. I move that we pay the gentleman. Sorry.
Motion made to, uh, approve the payment to Law Office of Richard Bowney for the discussion. Go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebon?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
All right. Does, uh, has anybody, uh, I, I want to approve these minutes all together and I, I don't believe anybody was missing. But, uh, if you have been, let me know. Approval of the minutes for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, February ninth, twenty twenty-one, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, October.
May twenty-sixth.
I said that.
You said sixteenth.
May, I don't think so. May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and December seventh, twenty twenty-one. I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Manise?
I, I'd like to vote separate on October nineteenth. All the rest are fine and we'll just take October nineteenth as a separate vote.
All right. I withdraw October nineteenth.
Withdraw for second.
Thank you. Um, okay. So the motion is for all of those with the exception of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. I will vote for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebon?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The October nineteenth meeting, sir?
Approve the approval of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second for the session.
And for discussion. Do you have a question on those, Mr. Manise?
No, I just wanted to vote, vote it separate. Wanted a separate vote on it because I, you know, I, I think there should be some clarity in some areas there, but, um, I, I, I think we should just go ahead and vote and, and take the vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Present.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Titlebon?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four zero one. Thank you very much.
Approval of the executive session minutes for June one, twenty twenty-one and hold.
Second.
Motion made to approve and hold those minutes. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebon?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero zero. Thank you very much. I don't see anything else on the agenda, gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Manise?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebon?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night, Wareham. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Night all.
Good evening.